...of the council's ability to affect policy. Respond to your comments during the meeting, but if you do need follow-up, we welcome you to give your information to the clerk sitting over here, who will make sure that staff or the council member follows up with you. If you have written materials to hand out, please also hand those to the clerk, and she will make sure that we receive them. With that, I will go ahead and open up the open comment period, and I will call on the one name that I have signed up so far, Diana Freeman.
Thank you. So I have handouts over there for you guys, too. So I'm here to defend my dogs. My name's Diana Freeman, and in Rochester, several weeks prior to July 4th and several weeks after, the neighbors and myself have endured constant illegal fireworks going off all hours of the day and night, even into the middle of the night. These fireworks disturb and upset our dogs. I have five. I can tell you that they're on my lap, and they're scared to death to go outside, and it takes them about three hours to relax after somebody shoots one off. They are innocent victims. It's not only causing trauma to our dogs, but it wakes us up, and it also endangers people that are shooting off the fireworks. Each year, people end up in the ER due to injuries from illegal fireworks. Many people get up early in the morning to go to work or go elsewhere, and we do not appreciate these illegal fireworks going off all over the night and day every single year. The Rochester Police Department is not responding to any of these calls this year regarding illegal fireworks being shot off. They are short-staffed, is what I was told, and so the sergeant in charge told his officers to just document the addresses. So it does no good to call in the addresses if they don't do anything about it. Therefore, the law and the noise ordinance are not being enforced here. The city council is busy approving funding for things expensive, like DMC, the Silver Lake Dam project, the expensive sports arena, and many other things with our tax dollars. And I grew up, and the three words I learned from my parents were "safety comes first." That means hire more officers to stop the tax and spend agenda that you continue to force on us, the taxpayers of Rochester, who suffers from these illegal fireworks. There are injuries every year from these illegal fireworks. The dogs are suffering and traumatized, and we, the people, are tired and we can't sleep. And I'm sure you guys have all experienced the same thing.
Final thought, Ms. Freeman?
Pardon?
Final thought.
Okay, so there's ordinances, there's a noise ordinance, and there's Minnesota statutes in the laws. And I have outlined what is legal and what's not legal in my handout, and you'll see that, and I appreciate something being done about it. I know the police are looking at it right now, and hopefully next year it'll get better.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
But we, the people, are fed up with it. Thank you.
All right, would anyone else from the public like to speak on this item? Or, excuse me, on open comment? All right, hearing no one, we will close open comment and officially call the meeting to order. Clerk Isler, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen?
Here.
Councilmember Bransford?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Council President Carlson? Mayor Norton?
Present.
All right, thank you, Kirk, and I will turn it over to Administrator Allison Zelms for her report.
Thank you, Council President. Council members, Mayor Norton, members of the public. We always start the city administrator's report thanking our teammates for acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence in mind. So thank you to all our teammates for the work that you do in offices and out within the community of Rochester. Have a few things to point out that are coming up, and so we do have Raptors Live with the U of M Raptor Center coming to the library this Wednesday from 4:30 to 5:30. So it's a presentation-style program. If folks are interested, they can get more information at the library website, or they can head on over from 4:30 to 5:30 on Wednesday. We also, this is a time of year where we have many signs in the roadway. So just a reminder to folks that the area between the sidewalk and the street, and then there are some other unique areas around major roadways, those are considered public right-of-way, and so whether that's a yard sale sign or a sign for this time of year for elections or any other type of sign in the right-of-way, Public Works doesn't actively enforce this, but when they see one, they will pick it up or if they get a call about something, and then you can coordinate pickup at 507-328-2450. Don't forget to add the 1. We're adding 1's before 507 now in Rochester, Minnesota. Also, did want to recognize our teammates in park. It is Parks and Recreation Month, and for our 71 full-time and 250 seasonal this time of year, especially Parks teammates, with them for all they do to provide a great park system across our community. And then, we also did just want to point out Thursday's Downtown has been happening on Thursdays through August 15th. So 11:00 AM to 8:30 PM on First Avenue. I think most people know where that is. Head on downtown and enjoy Thursday's Downtown. And then finally, did just want to point out that July is Disability Pride Month. We have talked about this a bit on some of our social media, but different ways to get involved. I also wanted to provide just an update that we did have an anonymous person, provide a thank you to our lifeguards that we work with at Soldier's Field Pool through the Swim Club, and they shared that "I wanted to express my heartfelt gratitude for your assistance and support in helping me navigate the pool chair and ensuring I could safely get in and out of the water as a newly paraplegic individual. Your kindness, patience, and professionalism made a significant difference in my experience at the pool. Your willingness to take the time to help me understand the process and your attentive guidance provided me with the confidence I needed to enjoy my time in the water. It's not just about the physical help you provided, but also the emotional reassurance that comes with knowing there are people like you looking out for everyone's safety and well-being. Thank you once again for your exceptional service and for making the pool a welcoming and accessible place for all." So great work with our partners at the Swim Club at the newly renovated pool and making that accessible for as many people as possible. And that's all I have today.
Wonderful update. Thank you. Mayor Norton?
That was really a nice way to end your report, Administrator Zelms. I really enjoyed hearing that and very proud of what we offer. And one of the things that we offered last night was our first Riverside Concert Series. There were 5,000, 6,000, 7,000 people there. It was a really wonderful turnout. And so I was really pleased to see that attendance up at that again. I think everybody had a great time. It didn't rain. Good news. And for the rest of the summer now, we will be having Sunday Concert Series. So hopefully more people will take advantage, bring a chair and enjoy. So I thought I would just do just a couple updates. The Rochester Visioning Project, Rochester Vision 2050, was kicked off at Rochester Fest. Had an opportunity to speak to the community a number of times during Rochester Fest and did one-on-one discussions with several hundred people, which was really nice to be able to talk to folks about what they want and hand out some little cards, which I placed in front of each of you. And we'll have some updated ones. So we're also going to offer a phone number for those who don't want to use computers or QR codes or young people use them. Some of the older population isn't as comfortable with those, so we have added an email and a phone call, so people can just call in and put their information in. This will be going now through the fall, so we've just kicked it off, and you'll be seeing more of it. And would love, if any of you know of groups that would like a presentation and to learn a little more about it, we have a Rochester Visioning Group of citizen volunteers who would love to go out in the community and talk to folks. So just contact the mayor's office and let me know what groups might be interested. Also, we had, of course, the League of Minnesota Cities Conference was in our community, and we had our very own Randy Brock was the emcee at one of our events, which was really fun. Also to let you know that the CEO of National League of Cities was in town visiting as well. We gave him a tour of our downtown area, showed him the best office in the city, which is the chancellor's office overlooking Peace Plaza. And then went over to the Biobusiness Center, where the recipients of NLC grants, the inclusive entrepreneurship grants, there were three. We were the only city in the country that got three grants. And those three nonprofits, which are Collider, Cradle to Career, and Ready, were all there to give presentations. And so the leader of the organization had, it was a wonderful presentation. He was quite moved to hear all the things that we had been doing with the small amount of grant funds that they gave us, but he was very moved. So I want to thank them. We also had a officer promotion this past week. So we had one, Captain Gronholdts, that was awarded the captain pin. We had two lieutenants, Dolly and Stroke. We had six sergeants, Clements, Lotemire Hill, Ackerson, Oskowski, and Marx. So it was a really nice ceremony, and I think some members of the administration were there to help, along with the families, and the families do the pinning for the promotions, which is really nice. So I thought I would share that with you. Also, I attended, just at the end of last week, the National League of Cities University Council Research Meeting. It was, it brought together cities, mayors, and city council members from cities that had land-grant universities in them. And of course, the University of Minnesota is one of those land-grant universities. And we talked basically about what extension can do to help cities solve some of the toughest issues that communities are facing. So a lot of it had to do with community development, food access, and health, hunger, nutrition issues. And we spent two days working through a whole series of exercises that will eventually lead to some work that I think National League of Cities is going to dig into. And one of the things that I am hoping to see is that that will also involve our, not just elected officials, but also staff in our communities as well. So I think we'll see more about that in the future. And then I did some lobbying on behalf of the City of Rochester to Finstead, Klobuchar, and Smith's congressional delegations offices. We talked about the GRIP grant, the Two Police Grant, South Broadway, and the solar panels out at the airport. So we were able to discuss all those. In particular, Senator Klobuchar was interested in the GRIP grant, and she thought she was willing to contact the secretary that runs that department and see if she can make a little headway for us. So it felt like a really, yeah, RPU's smiling over there. This is an important grant for RPU. So it was a very positive experience, so I thought I'd share that. And that's all I have, other than we do have, we are filling all the positions for boards and commissions. We could use a few more people interested in sustainability and resiliency. So if that happens to be something you're interested in, please submit your name online, and we'll get an interview done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Great updates. We will move on to the business of the meeting and look to approve the order of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda. I have Councilmember Dennis pulling F-10, 14, 27, and 28, correct?
I'm going to rescind F-14. I have my questions answered. And then the resident and the, I do think it's a little bit high, some of the prices and for F-27, 28, but I'm going to rescind all three of them from the poll.
Thank you. All right, so we have item F-10 pulled. Anything else? Otherwise, I'd invite a motion to approve and block items F-1 through 9 and F-11 through 29.
So moved.
All right, Councilmember Palmer, you have the floor.
Nothing, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to our public hearings, of which we have seven. So we, I always take a moment to go through the process just quickly, so we know what we're doing. So we have a staff introduction to start us off, followed by an applicant or representative of the applicant presentation for up to 10 minutes. Then we open the public hearing. The public, members of the public, if there are any who would like to speak, have up to five minutes, of course, with the encouragement of keeping comments brief. Close the public hearing. The applicant can come back up and address any of the comments or concerns for up to five minutes. Close the public hearing and then, or excuse me, invite council members to ask clarifying questions of the applicant or staff, and then a motion, discussion, and vote. So we will start with our first item, and this is the zone change, number CD 2024-001ZC by Arnett Enterprises. And we have Desmond McGeal here to start us off. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Carlson, Mayor Norton, members of the council. Good evening. This is a change of zone district on a 4.73-acre site, which is located at the southwest corner of Superior Drive Northwest and Heritage Place Northwest. The change of zone is from light industrial, LI, to mixed-use center, MXC. The site is classified as commercial and business development in the city's P2S comprehensive plan. The review team and the planning commission has found that the zone change criteria of the UDC has been met by the subject application. Both existing and proposed zone districts are suitable for the site. However, given the P2S land use classification of CBD and the given existing environment of retail and office, it would be a good change to be consistent with those uses. The MXC and LI zone districts are very similar in nature regarding the kinds of uses you can have in there. However, the MXC does have additional uses in commercial, residential, and public assembly uses than the light industrial zoning district has. So that is why the applicant has made this request to change the zone. The current tenant has opted not to renew their lease on that existing facility, and they are requesting the zone change to provide additional opportunities which would be compatible with the surrounding site development. So that concludes my intro. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. McGeal. With that, I would invite the applicant to a representative of the applicant. Please introduce yourself, and you have 10 minutes.
All right, good evening, Council President Carlson, members of the council. My name is Jason Scrimshaw. I'm a civil engineer with Kimley Horn here on behalf of the applicant. With no formal project being brought forward at this time or no formal redevelopment being imminent, I don't have a formal presentation for you. I want to thank staff for their careful and thoughtful review and thank planning commission as well for their review. Available for any questions you have. And that's all I have for now.
All right, we'll get back to you. Thank you, Mr. Scrimshaw. So I will open the public hearing, and I don't have anyone formally signed up. Would anyone like to speak on this first public hearing? All right, last call. We will close the public hearing and invite any questions from my colleagues of either the applicant or staff. Councilmember Keen?
I just want to ask staff about light industrial. We, I would tend to agree that this area probably isn't right for it, but where is the majority of our light industrial? Or how, what zone of the city are we, is it hidden? Is there a lot of it? Is there precious little of it? And how do we keep that in balance with the other sort of commercial development?
Sure, sure. I'll answer that, and if Ryan has anything to add, please feel free to jump in. The light industrial, we're currently looking at our comprehensive plan to add additional industrial inventory to our comprehensive plan to address the future needs of the city. One of the interesting things is this site and generally around it was identified as industrial at one point on our comprehensive plan. And the industrial uses that were selected ended up being light industrial, which you can have a lot of different commercial and retail office kinds of uses in that zoning district. So, and that's how it pretty much developed out along the West Circle Corridor. So as far as where we have a lot of it, we probably have some in the middle of the city, just north of Valley High. And then we probably have a little bit more up north. But I'd have to look to see all the other places that we have light industrial, but... We do have a concern, and that's why we started and requested that we look into the addition of more inventory as we assess our comprehensive plan. For these reasons, that we have lost a lot of this area to other uses that really weren't, aren't industrial in nature, but permissible by the zoning district.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, a motion?
I'd move to approve the, a two-part motion approving the zoning change, CD 2024-001ZC by Arnett Enterprise LLC, rezoning 4.73 acres from light industrial to mixed-use center and directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for the first reading.
All right, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
I think that when I look in the neighboring properties here, this zone change makes sense, and I'm glad we're able to support it.
Yeah, agreed. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item G-2, which is a major land subdivision, number CD 2024-007 Platt by Mayo Clinic, to be known as Rochester West Transit Village. And we have Elliot Mueller here. Go ahead.
Good evening, President, Mayor, members of the council. Elliot Mueller, Community Development. And I'll be introducing CD 2024-007 Platt by Mayo Clinic, located at 2905 Country Club Road West. And the request tonight is to plat 16 acres of land into two developable lots and three outlots. Approval of this major land subdivision will facilitate the future development of what we're calling the West Transit Village, which would serve as the westernmost stop for the Link Bus Rapid Transit line. The general development plan has been approved, as well as all the environmental assessments. And planning commission has forwarded a recommendation of approval to you tonight unanimously. And I'll answer any questions anybody might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mueller. I will invite the, let's see. There is an applicant today. Okay. Invite the applicant or representative of the applicant to speak. Welcome back, Mr. Scrimshaw. Please introduce yourself. You have 10 minutes.
All right. My name is Jason Scrimshaw with Kimley Horn, here on behalf of Mayo Clinic. I don't have a formal application or a formal presentation for this application. I will just say, every time I think of West Transit Village, just through word association, I'm reminded of the expression "it takes a village." And that's never more evident than on this project. It's true on every project, but especially on this one. There's been a tremendous amount of coordination and leadership between city staff, DMC, Mayo Clinic, and private development. So we're excited to bring this application forward. It's a really exciting initial step that will pave the way for a really exciting future project.
Excellent. We'll call you back up for questions. Right, so I will open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak? Quiet audience tonight. All right, we'll close the public hearing and invite questions from my colleagues of applicants or staff, if there are any. All right, or a motion? Member Palmer?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution CD 2024-007 Platt.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Palmer, you have the floor.
I think enough's been said. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
My microphone is off, sorry.
Okay, motion carries, 7-0. All right, thank you. Moving on to G-3 and G-4. We are going to combine these two, and Mr. Mueller will walk us through it, but we will do an introduction to both from staff and introduction to both from the applicant or representative of the applicant, and then we will take them as two separate motions and discussions. So go ahead and start us off, Mr. Mueller.
Evening, President, members of council, Mayor Elliot Mueller. So tonight, these are two applications that are connected to the same site. The first would be for vacation, to vacate the public right-of-way and utility easements associated with the previously platted properties associated with Pine Ridge Heights subdivision. This vacation is required prior to any replating. So the next application is to plat the property. And so right now, there's 15 lots, and they're wanting to add seven for a total of 22. And so they'll just reconfigure the lot layout as well as the street layout, so that street connection will still be maintained. Everything that's shown on that map in front of you has not been built yet. It's all, it's platted, and there's lots, and there's a street right-of-way, but there's no street there, and there's no houses. And so that's part of the reason why they're coming forward with the major land subdivision to add those additional lots. And I can, planning commission forwarded a recommendation for approval for both of them to you tonight, so I'll stand for any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. So would the applicant or representative of the applicant like to come speak? Mr. Twynton, I should have known you're even signed up. So are you okay with 10 minutes to speak to both items? All right, go ahead.
Thank you. President Carlson, members of the council, for the record, I'm Bill Twynton with WSE. I represent the owner applicant for both the street and utility vacation and the plat. As Mr. Mueller's indicated, the previous developer had platted this property, never put any utilities or streets in. We're replating the property now. We need to reconfigure the easements, rededicate those with a new plat, which is the second item on the agenda. So we just request your support for the vacation application and as unanimously suggested for approval by planning commission. In regards to the plat, I'll just stress that really very briefly. Staff is argumenting approval, and the final plat with two conditions. This plat is going to provide some more single-family lots that Rochester desperately needs. We're in agreement with the two conditions, and I just want to let you know that today I delivered a check for the Parkland dedication fee to the city. So we're sort of paid up. We have one more fee to pay on Oak Tree Boulevard. So we are in agreement with the two conditions. Are there any questions you might have?
All right, we will do the public hearing and get back to you. All right. So I, just like the others, I don't have anyone signed up for this item, but if anyone would like to speak on items G-3 or G-4, please come on up. All right, we'll close the public hearing and invite questions from my colleagues. Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. Prior to my time on the council, I seem to remember a discussion at the city council level that the city was going to try to avoid the creation of cul-de-sacs as much as possible. Could I get commentary on that?
From any eager staff who wants to point in?
Yeah, so we do have the connectivity index in the UDC, which, I mean, in this instance, would allow for a cul-de-sac. I mean, we aren't trying to avoid them necessarily, but we do want to maintain connection between neighborhoods.
All right, I bothered him while he was, can you say that one more time?
Yeah, so in the UDC, we do have the connectivity index, which would, you know, want us to facilitate, you know, connections throughout neighborhoods, but it doesn't, you know, disallow cul-de-sacs.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Keen?
I recall a discussion on this property a while back that had to do with water pressure and concerns with building at these heights and making sure the homes would have the right water pressure. Could you comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Keen. So there were some issues with water pressure, not that they couldn't build. They would just have lower water pressure, which may in turn require some engineering for that. I'm not 100% on that engineering side. And I know RPU is aware of that and has been in contact with the developer to discuss those. And it seems like it's moved forward, hence the plat before you tonight.
Mr. Twynton, would you like to come on up?
Yeah, and President Carlson, members of the council, for the record, I'm Bill Twynton, WSE. Our client, myself, and Councilmember Palmer met with RPU, and we worked out an agreement where we paid over $100,000 towards the future water extension that gets everybody in the neighborhood to correct pressure. And in the interim situation, our client is paying for putting in pumps in each individual home. But the long-term solution, which I'm glad we arrived at, was giving the city a huge contribution towards a future in water. So hopefully soon, we'll have that there for everybody to enjoy in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Yeah, the one point I was hoping to bring out was that we don't have the water pressure problem in the new homes, but there's also work towards improving the rest of the neighborhood when we combine it with other work that's going to be going on in the next couple of years.
That's the point.
Yep, thank you.
Great. Any other questions before a motion or a motion?
I will move on G-3, the request, a resolution approving the vacation, CD 2024-003 VAC by Pine Southwest LLC to vacate the public right-of-way and utility easements associated with the previous Pine Ridge Heights subdivision.
Councilmember Keen, any?
Yeah, again, I wanted to bring that point out here, that there was concerns here. There's concerns with building at these heights and being able to get enough water pressure. But I think we did work out a thing that allows this to be built, but also there's an eye towards, when we're doing other work now, to be able to improve the other pressure in the other homes, which I was, I want to make sure we bring out of this discussion.
Great. Any other discussion? Councilmember Palmer?
I'll just add to that, that I appreciate that the developer was willing to help with this problem and that RPU was willing to look at a bigger solution to the entire neighborhood, which will be helpful for everybody. So it's a good thing for everybody.
Great. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay? Motion carries on G-3 related to the vacation petition. Allo posse nay? Motion carries on G3 related to the vacation petition, and then motion for G4?
I move to adopt a resolution approving the final plat, CD 2024-009 PLAT by Pine Southwest LLC to be known as Ponderosa Pine, with two conditions for the re-subdivision of 6.79 acres of land into 22 residential lots located southeast of Ponderosa Place, north, I should say southwest, and west of Highway 52.
Second.
Councilmember Keen?
Nothing to add.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Allo posse nay? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Moving on to item G5, which is the final plat, number CD 2024-015 plat by Bigelow Homes LLC to be known as Harvest West. And we have Mr. McGill. Again, go ahead.
Thank you, President Carlson, members of the council, Mayor Norton. Good evening again. This is a final plat that proposes to split approximately eight acres up. This site is located at the northwest corner of 55th Street and 55th Avenue Northwest. The proposal is to divide this into 44 attached, single-family residential unit lots and one common area lot. This is all within an R2 low-density residential, small-lot zone district. The request is consistent with the Harvest View General Development Plan that was amended in 2008, and also consistent with the preliminary plat that was adopted or approved last year in October. Private and public utilities will be, private drives, guest parking, and project amenities will be located in Lot 45 of the project. And the review team is recommending approval of this final plat, subject to two conditions of approval. And that concludes my introduction. I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Mr. McGill. I will invite the applicant or representative of the applicant. Well, can you please introduce yourself, and you have 10 minutes?
Good evening, Council President, Mayor, members of the council, I'm Mike Paradise, President of Bigelow Homes. I don't really have anything to add, but I'm here for questions. And we do agree to the two conditions.
Great. All right, we'll call you back up if there are questions. So I'll open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak is welcome to step forward. All right, we'll close the public hearing and invite my colleagues to ask any questions or a motion.
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving final plat, CD 2024-015 plat by Bigelow Homes LLC to be known as Harvest West, with two conditions for the subdivision of 44 residential lots and one outlot on 7.94 acres.
All right, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
No, I'm glad to see this project moving forward. This is, again, kind of a new way for doing things, and I think it's been working well. And I appreciate the efforts in the private sector to keep this moving.
Other discussion? Councilmember Wall?
I too appreciate it very much, particularly in Ward III, and how Bigelow Homes is really developing a really beautiful corner of our city, providing multiple ways for people to become homeowners. Really excited that tonight we have a chance to act on many of those proposals, which help move us toward a greater stock of housing in our city.
I was literally going to say the exact same thing, but thank you for your worth.
I read it from yours.
It's nice to see so many housing projects on the agenda today. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Allo posse nay? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to another project, the final plat, number CD 2024-016 plat by Norse Companies to be known as Norse Rochester, and this is G6. And we have Mr. McGill ready to go again. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Carlson. Yes, this is a final plat to create two parcels and dedicate right-of-way for Arboretum Drive Northwest. The subject site is 18.5 acres. It's located at the northeast corner of Arboretum Drive and 41st Street Northwest. This plat will aggregate five existing lots into the two parcels and the dedicated right-of-way. The preliminary plat for the project was approved by a city council on June 17. This final plat is consistent with that approved preliminary plat and the Arboretum GDP. There is a site development plan that's currently in process that would be for the development of the two parcels consisting of 187 townhouse rent units as a rental community. The review team has reviewed this application and is recommending approval of the final plat, subject to eight conditions of approval, which shall be completed prior to the approval of the site development plan application or the final, and the final plat, recordation of this final plat. So that concludes my introduction. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McGill. Would the applicant or representative like to speak? Come on up. Good to see you again.
Mayors, members of the council, my name's Josh McKinney with Measure Group. I'm representing the applicant this evening. We really don't have a formal presentation and whatnot, but we're excited to be a part of the city of Rochester and really also want to just take a minute to, for a little bit of appreciation for how well staff has guided us through this process and how, just honestly, how seamless it seemed through it. So we really appreciate the flexibility and honestly, the collaboration that way. So I'll go, you're to stand for any questions.
All right, we'll invite you back up if there are any. Thank you. All right, I'll open the public hearing. Any comments on this item? You guys are making it so easy for me. Nothing? Close the public hearing and invite my colleagues to ask any questions of staff or the applicant? Councilmember Wall, your ward again?
Yes. And glad to see this development as well. And provides a different kind of niche for renting in Rochester. I think we'll be anxious to see how that works out for all the people who will eventually rent there. I know there was concern about 41st and that curve. Have we done any more work on addressing what could be perceived as some problems coming out of Arboretum?
Looking, Mr. Dombrowski.
Yeah, the project, good evening, Mayor, President, members of the council. The project, as part of their traffic study, we aren't requiring specific intersection improvements, but like any other intersection in the community, as we would see any sort of operational issues, team will look into it, and in the future, if we need to make changes, that would occur. But the project is not driving anything new at that intersection.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We don't have a motion yet, right?
No.
We're moving, okay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve final plat, number CD 2024-016 plat, with the eight conditions.
Councilmember Palmer, you have the floor.
Enough's been said.
Just want to say that I appreciate last meeting when you were here, that your willingness to respond to so many questions. I think it was a really nice demonstration of how our developers and our community members are interacting and ways to share concerns and get feedback in immediate time. So thank you for that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Allo posse nay? Motion carries. All right, thank you. We will move on to item G7, and we have Mr. Svenby here to walk us through the support of Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development Applications for Cytotherics for Local Expansion. Very exciting.
Good evening, Council President, members of council, Mayor Norton, Brent Svenby, Community Development. Tonight, we're here for a public hearing on a MIF application. But we also need to have, and get to the request, adopting resolutions supporting the Minnesota Investment Fund Program Application and the Job Creation Fund Program Application for Cytotherics here in Rochester. Just briefly about, so staff has been meeting with our teammates at Ready and also the applicant, which is Cytotherics, in regards to their expansion plans for Rochester. So they are, they do develop cell-based therapies for liver disease. They are looking to expand their lab space to support the next stage of their development. They are looking to purchase a building that is equipped with a state-of-the-art clean room and lab space. They are looking to create 22 new full-time jobs here in Rochester with salaries ranging from 1923 an hour up to 6060 per hour. And they have about, I think, like $2 million in costs in the building and another $1 million, I think, in renovations to the building to create it to their needs. So basically, the Minnesota Investment Fund provides a, if it's, we'll have to submit application to DED. If it's successful, DED will enter into a contract with the city for the dollars. And then the city will enter in a loan agreement with the company once they have met the requirements of the program as far as the amount of the investment they're making into the facility. And with the creation of the 22 new jobs in the community, those dollars can be released to the company. And in this, in this case, they are seeking a repayable loan. What that means is when those dollars are paid back to the city for that loan, the city gets to keep 40% of those dollars to go back into our revolving loan account program. And the other 60% gets sent back to DED, and they can reinvest that into other businesses in Minnesota. And the other program they are seeking to put an application for is the Job Creation Fund. And that program is a pay-for-performance program. So once they create those 22 jobs, they will be paid the award amount which DED determines for the program. Based on initial conversations with DED, it looks like the MIF loan will be roughly in that $460,000 range. And the job creation program will be about $410,000. So this evening, we have to have a public hearing on the MIF portion. And then we are looking for two resolutions of support, one for the MIF program and one for JCF. I see our partners from Ready are here this evening, and we also have representatives of some Cytotherics here. Do you have any questions on their business?
And the city is the applicant.
Prep, so you're the applicant.
Great. Would you like to invite them to speak, or?
If you have questions for them, they're here to answer. Any questions you have?
On the other end? All right, sounds good.
You know, Mr. Wade always likes to talk.
Yeah, he was disappointed. He didn't get his time in the sun. Okay, well, we will open the public hearing and invite you back, and maybe just invite John up for good measure, but... All right, so I will open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing. And let me think of a question for John. Sure, come on up. Mr. Wade, is this something we've applied for in the past, and how has our success been?
The success of the Minnesota Investment Fund and the partnership broadly with DED has been very successful. This would not be possible if it were not because of the city of Rochester, the partnership that you see, the flavor of that, I think you see in this proposal, to have Cytotherics growing and expanding. I think we all did the math real quick to see what $60 an hour looks, you know. But anyway, a lot of really great jobs, super science behind it. We are, we are investors in the company today, as is Mayo Clinic and a number of other investors. They are seeking to grow here, and we are thrilled about that. So we thank you very much for your consideration.
All right. Before you leave, any other questions for Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Yes.
Come on back. All right, Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I appreciate everything that Ready does, and so I'm excited to see. We have a lot of big things coming up in the future.
We're very optimistic about the future, particularly in this sector, the medical technology sector. If you talk to Dr. Turziger, Bafar, or many other of our partners, the folks that founded Reon, but there's Viread, Cytotherics, and many, many others. This is a great growth area for our city. Solid jobs. Great benefactors to the community, good partners to the community. So certainly, we view this as a great step in a much larger process to encourage and help develop businesses in the med tech space. It's probably one of our greatest growth opportunities for the community.
Thank you, Ms. Wade.
Thank you.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, this could be for staff, but since you're here, Ms. Wade, I just want to make sure I understand it correctly, that the, what we're doing tonight is become like the city is the sponsor for Ready and the applicant to go to the state. I think that means that all the loan would come from DED, from their, their funding. Did this group also apply for any of the Ready local programs? And are they taking advantage of it?
We are continuing to talk with the applicant, relate with the city as the applicant, with Cytotherics about opportunities related to the economic development fund. As mentioned in the packet, we're already invested $200,000, which is kind of where we would like to be. However, we'd like to continue to work with them with their real estate acquisition so that we can all work together to make sure this happens.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any last questions? All right, otherwise, a motion? Thank you.
I'd like to make a two-part motion. First one, adopting a resolution supporting the Minnesota Investment Fund Program Application for Cytotherics for funding of the Minnesota Department, from funding for the, from DED. And the second part, adopting a resolution on the Minnesota Job Creation Fund Program Application for Cytotherics funding from DED.
Second.
Mr. Keen?
Yeah, I think these are creative ways, and I'm glad to see our local economy trying to take advantage of this scaffold funding to get these projects going.
Yeah, I think this is a really good example of the demand for DMC and the city partnering on some shared lab space in the future as well. Maybe this circumstance, they would want their own building, but just having that demand for shared lab is really an exciting consideration for us in the future to fund. So thank you. Thanks for your interest in Rochester. Look forward to having you here as a business. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Allo posse nay? Motion carries. All right, thank you, team. Thanks, Mr. Svenby. We just powered through those seven public hearings. And now we are moving on to a great item. Ms. Woodward, you're presenting.
I am, yes.
Okay, so it is H1, the Home Ownership Creation Program, called Prairie Ridge Recommendation.
Good evening, Council President, Mayor, and members of council. I am here presenting on this item. I do want to give a thank you to all of the Housing and Neighborhood Services team that's been working on this, including Brent, Adam, Frok, and Tarnines, who have been working on trying to pull all these things together. So the first and foremost, I kind of wanted to go back through with recognizing the strategic priorities within council has set up, including affordable living is that overarching, which is the very much why we're here today. And I know you've seen a lot of these slides, but it's kind of nice to go back through. Looking at the top five things for Maxfield, really new homeownership opportunities. And that's kind of what led to a lot of these things that we've been working on throughout this time period. And recognizing that we have had shortfalls in the supply of owner-occupied housing and needing for a number of new units by 2030, which was identified in the Maxfield study that we're just not keeping up with, and recognizing those need for additional housing units as we continue to move forward as a city. We also are seeing, and you can, we kind of have some single-family housing permits. We're not keeping pace with what we really need. We're only producing about 200 annually in terms of housing units. And we, our goal was in needing 500 units, which led to where we're kind of coming up with that 960 annually is trying to make up that difference over time. And as you can see where our numbers are at right now, in terms of 2024, we're at about 103. So we're not even, we're, you know, we're about halfway through the year, and that's where our numbers are right now, which is really why we've been looking at different homeownership opportunities. And that kind of brought us to where we were looking at updating and really looking at our homeownership creation program. This was formerly the fee reimbursement program, just to put it in context, that we updated and really looked at in terms of what do those numbers look like. It launched in 2022 using ARPA funding, and 40 units have been supported with that fee reimbursement. So we've been able to have some assistance pulling those through. We, we do have some remaining in that program, but that has been allocated to the county's project for trailside apartments formerly Maude Wood 2. So that funding will be going to that to support that housing program as we move forward. All of those units have been done by four local builders. We've allocated about $254,000 for that. Those were all after the fact. So those housing units were built, and then those fees were reimbursed, often putting towards down payment and closing cost assistance. The one on there is for Pebble Creek, just to note that that particular received about $6,300 in fee reimbursement, as an example. So we really took that fee reimbursement program, and back in February, we, earlier this year, we kind of... this year, we kind of transitioned to the homeownership creation program, of really looking at how we're going to more incentivize the supply of housing units. So we really built out whether it was, there's one application that we have on our website that people can submit, and it looks at two different options, whether they're going to produce maximum sale price of 115% AMI, which results in a fee reimbursement, so that'll come after the unit is built. We're also looking at building out the number in terms of scale, in terms of proposed units, and how we can provide assistance upfront and create that support as they're moving forward with their project. And all of these are going to be tied to AMI, so as, we're going to kind of evaluate that every year and update those numbers in terms of what that sale price would look like. And really what our goal is, and we've kind of said this all along, is really looking at supply and bringing in more, which will also help overall the sales price across those units as well. And then, that really, the reason we kind of shifted the homeownership creation program is to really tie into local option sales tax and the Economic Vitality Fund, recognizing that housing creation was going to be a very significant portion of where we're going to look to spend those funds. And this was presented last month of recognizing that affordable housing fee relief, we have kind of allocated up about 14 million over, as we're looking at that fund right now, towards such programs as the homeownership creation. So how can we kind of help spur that supply and that movement in the housing market? So we've kind of identified all of these, and that brings us to why we are here today. We have a specific request with the Prairie Ridge subdivision. This will result in 201 for-sale homes. Forty of the homes will be priced between $368,000 and $422,000. So overall, we got 19% of the 201 units falling within that 115% AMI. We're looking, these are going to be slab-on-grade, and they're also not necessarily tied to this, but they're receiving a million in no-interest construction loans for the Coalition for Rochester area housing, so we are working with our partners on all of that. There's also going to be a next phase that's not included in this, the developer is looking to do 126 for-rent townhomes, which will be a separate project from what this is. These will all be homeownership units that are being proposed. And this land is really available because of the West Umbro extension, so this has been opened up with that other work that was done previously by the council. And this $4 million is leveraging about $16 million in private investment within this site. The GDP was submitted in May, and it probably will be approved in the coming weeks, there's just a few comments to be done, and they will be moving forward with doing the next phase of the preliminary plat and the mass grading plan later this summer. So those are in the works as well. And just to note, we have also included some restricted sale resale clause within this to kind of protect with those, those sales price of those units for about 10 years, allowing for movement as long as the AMI kind of shifts, we'll be able to change that sale price, but we're trying to make sure that that funding is secured for a period of time. And we've also set out, based on some of the feedback we got at the last study session and council meeting, ways to kind of break up when the funding gets released, to really make sure we're protecting that funding as we move forward. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there questions for staff, for Ms. Woodward? Mr. Keen?
Yes, you mentioned the GDP is, the approval is going to happen in the coming weeks. As I understand it, that's a staff administrative approval that won't be in front of council?
That is correct, the GDP is done at a staff level.
Okay, and the major sub, land subdivision has already happened?
Well, the next will be the preliminary plat, which would
Okay, then, then.
come forward, council, yeah. It will need to go to the planning commission and then council.
Okay, I, so I, again, I'm glad to see this, I want to support this, but I guess I have to ask, is there a but-for clause? Would this be happening with or without the city's support?
I, I think part of the city's support is allowing this, this entire project to move forward at a rapid level. The goal of the construction would be to have all 201 units done by 2027. Without the support, there wouldn't be a guarantee that all of those units would be done in that time period. That's probably also the reason we're committing that funding upfront, is to show that commitment so that they feel, the developer can move forward more rapidly on the construction of those units.
Okay, and then, second question, again, I think I understand, but I just want to make sure, you showed a fairly complex chart where there's going to be this sort of relief for each home, but, but there's also this idea of like, we're building market-rate homes in here, too. Is there private, is there public money going in support of the, of the market-rate homes?
So overall, it probably averages out, but really what we're focused on in terms of tracking over time would be the 40 units that would be specifically under that AMI. And there is a requirement based on how we set up the program, we just go back to reference.
Yep.
You can see the total number of proposed units
Yep.
and the requirement in terms of the percent of those units that must fall within that AMI. So this project at a minimum would require 15% of those units, and they are providing 19%, will be within that category of 115% AMI.
It gets confusing here and there, but I guess I want to make sure, I do so that the support is for, I mean, I think there is something going on here with the sales tax money, is in, we're trying to accelerate the market-rate housing happening and create more what we'll call affordable, or working-class first homes with that idea of 115% of AMI?
Yes, I think both of those things within the sales tax, it was really about housing creation and also support of different affordable type options, so we're trying to do both of those as we're looking at the homeownership program.
And good, and just so there's no confusion with my questions, I have no problem with the idea of us trying to accelerate with, with the sales tax money that was for the housing creation, so.
And I would note, I think all of the units that are being proposed are under $500,000.
Yep.
So there's a certain number at that AMI, but there might be some higher, and we are, we actually are encouraged by the mix of different types of pricing, we want to be able to see that within that community as well.
Yeah, and again, I, I've become more confident as ever that the idea of just adding market-rate housing is, is a relief to our affordable housing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer?
And, and I would agree with Mr. Keen that, that just adding that has been a learning experience for me, that any, any home is a good home to add. The thing, if I understand this correctly, too, is that they're scattering the, all the houses, so that you don't have a street full of, these are the affordable, for lack of a better way of saying it.
That is correct, they're going to be intermixed within the site.
And then you have the coalition is helping out with this, with, with some financing also?
Yes, they are providing a million-dollar zero-interest construction loan for this project.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, motion? You have questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, definitely, I've been attending most, or as many as I can, the housing coalition meetings, and, and heard so many great things happening, so I appreciate the work that staff brings and shares with the community. I hope that in the future, those meetings can be recorded, so others can listen to those important information. But I guess what I, what I wanted to, it was brought up, some stuff that was brought back, Councilmember Wojak in 2019 did a, I'm trying to pull it up here, a, oh, golly, a, you know, a letter to, you know, try to get more measurable data, and I hear, I see this, and I appreciate all this information that's here. I would, in the future, I think it would be good to have council have these slides ahead of time, too, because I, when I kind of go back and to process some of these numbers prior to having this, this council meeting would be good to, to have questions prepared. My, I guess, I guess I'm worried, I don't know, I, just accountability-wise, and maybe you've already touched on this, and, and please help me, I'm a little bit under the weather today, so I apologize for maybe slowly asking this question. How, how is it going to be, like, in the future, made sure that, that, you know, people are able to stay in these homes, that there, you know, people, you know, like, like I keep using my lived experience, making under 20,000 full-time is a huge majority of the, I shouldn't have said a huge majority, but a large percentage of people who are in, working for the school district, and people, you know, like with Perez, and people who are, their hands are tied with the funding source. So you have people making really low wages, you know, so a full-time worker, family of four, making 20,000. How is, how is, going to be looking at making sure people are able to stay in these homes that, I don't, I, I guess I'm, I'm just worried about the enforcement and the accountability of, of these, there's a lot of questions there, I apologize, I'm not formulating, I didn't have these numbers right here laid out in this way, but is, is that going to be something that is going to be revisited to council? Is it going to be reported on to the coalition, or how's, how's the future of this going to be looking?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think there's kind of two different parts. I think as we're looking at overall local option sales tax and how that funding is getting spent, I don't have them before me, but we have kind of laid out how we're going to continue to measure and bring that information back to council to show how many units are being created, all those different elements that we've kind of broken down in terms of local option sales tax. In terms of, on a second, with these particular units, like the 40 units that have to be under that area median income, there'll be documentation recorded against those and be able to maintain that, and we will be monitoring that as well, in terms of being able to make sure that that information is tracked.
Okay, so there'll be measurable tracking that will come back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right.
Oh, good.
There a question or a motion?
You can do a motion, I think he has a question.
I, I just want to clarify something, that what she was talking about was a housing alliance, not the housing coalition. Housing alliances is done through the Rochester area foundation, and the coalition is a group of five different entities in Rochester, which is completely different, just to clarify.
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Keen, a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to motion, make a motion adopting a resolution approving the contribution of $4 million to the Prairie Ridge development to support the creation of 201 for-sale homes by the homeownership creation program.
Second.
Councilmember Keen, you have the floor?
Yeah, I, again, I think, trying to keep this in the bigger picture, I think the residents who voted for the sales tax are, this, they should look at, and votes like this, is this is how the sales tax comes to bear on the Rochester of the future. We have been struggling for many years with keeping up on the housing needs, and being able to use the sales tax, being able to use local developers, local builders to do this, this is really the kind of stuff that I think I've been watching to see happen, and I'm, I'm glad to see us being able to approve it.
I'd second that, I think this is really exciting for staff to have put together a program that's responsive to the community needs and meetings with builders and developers, and to have somebody take us up on it pretty, in pretty short order is really exciting. So, I can't believe we already are going to have 200 units built in the next few years. This has been something I know in the past happened, but hasn't in years, so thank you so much for your staff work and for the partnership with our developer. Other discussion? Councilmember Dennis?
Yeah, I just, I guess I have a question, and please correct me, too, if I'm not wording this correctly, but we all have committees that we're on, Zumba, Reddish, Watershed, you know, different committees that we, agency oversight committees, and I believe Councilmember Palmer is on the housing committee, and so I, I've been to a lot of these meetings, like I've been mentioning, and I see on occasion, but I would maybe see if we could have someone who's on the housing committee chime in on all the meetings and different things, on some insight he has on, on this proposal, and where, you know, how it looks comparable to all the things he's been involved on with the Rochester, Rochester City Council Housing. Is that correct? You're on the housing committee?
I'm on the housing coalition, I'm the member of the city council that was appointed, I'm on the second year of it. The coalition has worked really, really hard with all the members of it to, to do this, but I think you have to step back at February 6 of 2023, when the city council, all seven of us said, come back to us, staff, with, with ideas of how do we get homeownership moving again in Rochester, and I think this is the, the, one of the steps that we, we have taken that I think we should be proud of.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to thank the staff for the work that they've done on this, and reiterate the point that Councilmember Palmer made earlier, which is, it's hard to view these as housing for low income when we see the amounts at $350,000 to $400,000, but it does move the market so that people who are ready to move, excuse me, to move up, are able to purchase these, and it can open up some of the other homes that might be of a lower house price for folks that are struggling. So, I just want to reiterate, I think that's really important, and it really is about moving the market and getting things moving, not necessarily providing homes for the very low income.
Absolutely. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Woodward. All right, we have one pulled item tonight. Let me get back to my notes, but Councilmember Dennis pulled item F10?
I did, I would like to request a brief break, please, prior to the, because we're flying through all these meeting minutes and all these different agenda items, if we could.
Just five minutes, okay, or do you need longer?
That's, that's fine.
Okay, well, for sure, start back by 7:15.
Recording stopped.
has caused many of us to get multiple calls and complaints. So my hope is, as we, I assume, pass this ordinance, that we do some publicity about what the law change says so that we can kind of maybe educate the community about this so that they understand that grasses can be as tall as 10 and 12 inches before it triggers the need to call the city and ask for intervention. So just kind of tickling everybody that some sort of educational campaign, whether it be PR, communication, newspaper article, to help people understand the state law change and our working alongside that.
And certainly prepare 311 to respond to some of those calls. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I want to second what you have said, Mayor Norton. You know, welcome to the Pacific Northwest, everyone, with the amount of rain we've had this year. I am a lawns to legumes coach, and I also sit on the State Board of Water and Soil Resources. So I have voted to approve and fund the lawns to legumes program that's been running throughout our state for the last couple of years. And promoting Forbes native grasses and habitat for others is something very different than letting your turf grass and any weeds that may grow in your landscape without mowing is very, very different. Now, of course, letting your lawn grow very long and letting those plants mature fosters a lot of biodiversity, and I applaud that. However, with minimal maintenance, you can go ahead and let that happen without violating our noxious weed ordinance. But also to let people know that we have a really great natural landscape permit that's available to anyone that wants to pursue that. It is a little bit more work, just like planting a native habitat would be in any of your lawns. But please dig a little bit deeper. Our city is trying really hard to foster more biodiversity, sustainability in those landscapes that would be more maintenance-free. And look, search out those other programs. And look at the Omsley County Master Gardeners, look up lawns to legumes, look up Blue Thumb, planting for clean water. All of those programs can help you to create a more native landscape without violating our ordinance and/or promoting some of that diversity, biodiversity that we are striving for here in the city.
Thanks for that comment. Councilmember Wall.
And I would echo the number of calls that we've received, even to the extent that it's catching up with speeding. And it's hard to catch up with speed.
Parking.
Well, parking too. But I will, and he's not here, I hope he's watching online, I would really commend Parks and Recs Director Paul Widman and his staff. They've been very responsive. They have gone out, they have looked, they have mowed. Again, of all the people that have contacted me about lawn grass and weeds, this exceeds the normal rate. At least two-thirds of have written back, thank you for what the city has done.
That's great. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. K three.
An ordinance annexing to the City of Rochester approximately 9.5 acres of land located on the west side of East River Road, north of the 44th Street Northeast alignment.
Move approval?
Second.
Councilmember Keen?
Nothing to add.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. K four.
An ordinance of the Rochester City Code approving the renaming of roadway sections of Second Avenue Southwest and Seventh Street Southwest in proximity of Soldiers Field Veterans Memorial to the Wayne Stillman Parkway Southwest.
Move approval?
Second.
Councilmember Keen?
No, nothing to add.
Any discussion? Councilmember Palmer?
Yeah, I think it just needs to point out that Wayne did a wonderful job and dedicated a lot of hours, and so did a lot of people on that memorial. And I think this is a, they asked to have this done, and I think this is a wonderful, wonderful thing that the city's done. So, thank you.
Great. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to other business, we actually do have a few items of other business tonight. I will turn it over to Councilmember Wall to start us off.
Thank you. I will begin with a motion to ask staff to bring funding possibilities for consideration by the council in the amount of $25,000 to support Rochester's branch of the NAACP in bringing the Sound of Gospel to Rochester on Friday, February 28, 2025.
Second. All right, Councilmember Wall, you have the floor.
Thank you. Rochester's branch of the NAACP approached the city seeking support for a non-sectarian celebration of a musical genre at the end of Black History Month in 2025. Beyond the requested city support, they are seeking matching funds so that the presentation is as accessible as possible to community members. The motion requests staff members to identify possibilities for funding. I understand the mayor's office may be able to financially support some of this. Rochester Public Music may be able to help, as it will be in a new funding year. The city has unspent funds left from the Open Gym Pilot Program. Diversity Equity Funds might be available. There could be other funding available. Those who have seen the performance are effusive about its ability to bring joy and to unite people. Especially in these days, anything that brings unity is worthy of consideration, and I urge the council to support exploring the possibilities.
Other discussion? Councilmember Dennis?
Well, I just absolutely adore this idea. I think this is wonderful. So I am a big fan, and I will be supporting this. I just wanted to bring up a couple thoughts on the issue of city giving money to organizations. Again, for the record, I'm a big supporter of anything that brings people together, and I've been involved with the NAACP with many things the last few years, and I just, I think it's a great, great organization. But sitting on the Agency Oversight Committee, I see that there's a lot of organizations throughout Rochester who also would really like city funding. So I'm just asking, just for clarification, what goes into the process of, let's say, you know, three or four, 17 more other wonderful organizations here in Rochester have great unity-building activities? Is this the same process to? I'm really just curious. I do not want to see this not pass. I think this is a great, great thing to bring forward. But I also, I feel like I just want to know the protocol for doing so, so that in the future, other organizations who are watching this and say, well, this is, wow, we would love to, and I encourage other organizations to find ways of getting funding for these events. So that was my first question, is what's the protocol? And I want to set a wonderful standard to say that the city supports nonprofits and supports people taking initiative to come and find funding. So I'm going to support this. And my second question is, you made a comment just now, Councilmember Wall, that the mayor's office possibly has funds. And I had just sent an email last week asking for, like, what kind of expenditures the mayor's office had to see for transparency. That was not given or allowed to the city council, so I don't know.
Point of order.
I would like, I'd like to know.
Point of order. Councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
Again, the specific, we, the request here is saying it could be that way, but to now tangent off that and say, we're going to look at the mayor's reports, that's a past business we've been over and over again, and I didn't want to restart it again.
It's current, it just brought up just now, I'm sorry.
Just brought it up as a possible comment.
We're not doing back and forth. Councilmember Dennis, can we move past the mayor's budget issue and to your next point or question?
Okay. I just think if we're going to be spending taxpayer dollars to support amazing organizations like the NAACP, I would like to know where the tax dollars are being spent and how we can find the wasteful spending and use it for beneficial things. This is a beneficial organization, and I would love to support this.
Okay. Could Councilmember Wall weigh in on the process for bringing this forward to council?
You know, I would like to weigh in, but I would probably be the least informed member of this group with my shorter tenure here. So I would like to have Mr. Palmer take that question.
Mr. Palmer, would you mind?
No, not at all. And I have to make sure that everybody understands that the mayor has worked with us on this and has been very supportive of this program, and we are looking at different funding sources and hopefully come up with that. And so it was brought to our attention that this would be a great event for the City of Rochester, and one of the things that really, I think, makes it wonderful for Rochester is that they will do some tables and some informational booths for people so that they can see, you could work for the City of Rochester, and if you're a minority, this is what we're looking for, and this is what we can help you with. Because we've all heard from our police department, all heard from our fire department, from our personnel department, that that's something that we want to try to get more of, is more equity, and that was one of the things we would do on this. So when we came up with this suggestion, we asked, how do we do this? Obviously, it has to be with a nonprofit. Obviously, it has to be something good for the City of Rochester that the City of Rochester cannot do. There is funding requests for this year because of next year's budget doesn't start until January 1st. There's commitments that they have to make prior to that. And so I think the motion was made to say, come back with something. Staff, what do you think? And I think that, I applaud that idea. And effusus, what was the word that you used? EFF? Your word, you said feeling of gratitude?
I don't know, I say a lot of words.
Effusive, yes. Feeling of gratitude. Yes.
I'm going to say a few words, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Keen. So I've really struggled with this one, because at the surface, and even when you dig deeper, it sounds like a really powerful event, and there's engagement from Black members of our community that sounds like this is well-supported and feels like it would be a really meaningful community celebration. What I'm struggling with is the process piece. Before I came onto council, I led the nonprofit consortium, which was over 100 organizations in our community that were all very excited to have me, or many of them were excited to have me elected because they thought it was a pathway to having somebody on council that represents the interest of nonprofits, of which there are many and varied, and many of which have, over the years, come forward, not necessarily and appropriately, just requesting or wanting to learn more about how the city could support their organization that was aligned with city priorities and values. And having to say over and over and over again, this is just not an area that the city has a lot of flexibility in funding. We do fund organizations that either deliver services that the city is otherwise not delivering, or that we have CDBG or some other source of external funds that we can commit. So it's difficult for me to now say, oh, even though there's this great organization, great effort coming forward and saying, we need resources to choose this over a program that centers equity related to workforce development, or something that is closely aligned with our values, that has concrete outcomes, and that not to minimize a community event, but is something that is more enduring than a community event. So, again, surface level, I support this, but just in my good conscience and being a good steward of our resources and connection to the nonprofit community, I'm having a hard time identifying this as a priority over some of the other requests that have come forward. So, no offense at all, appreciate the opportunity to have the discussion, but that's where I stand. Councilmember Keen and Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Yeah, Councilmember Wall makes a fairly simple request. It's not, it's to come up with the best way to fund it. And again, I, again, I'll ask staff what they think of that, but my concern is less with the specific request. It's this, it's like, what is the policy consideration of what we're doing here tonight? Are we really signaling the nonprofit community that, in worst case, we're open for business, just talk to one of us, we'll bring it to a meeting, and that might be the way to get through this. Right now, we have two or three ways that we do fund things like that, and Council President Carlson talks about. In our budget process, we have a thing where we have groups that do support work for us. We spend a lot of time on that to allocate, about $700,000, and it is difficult. And most of it is tied to groups that are doing services for us, our neighbors, as an example, or Ready, some of the groups that are funded through there. But the other way we do that is through community development block grants. And there's a small subset of that, and we have a process around it of how they apply and do these things. And those, I mean, I appreciate those, those are controlled programs. This feels more like just meet Mark, call him at work, and he'll bring something up, and that's the way to get this done. I don't like that one-off nature of it. As far as the specific thing, I mean, I could come around on this, but I, it would take me, what is your incentive? Is this bootstrap money that we're going to do one time? And we understand it that way? And then maybe we're saying, like, we're not just giving money to a nonprofit, we're trying to support a specific festival. I know there's talk about how much money we give to Rochester Festers, like Council President Carlson says, there would be no end to it if this was our new process we were bringing up and saying, just meet us in the neighborhood and talk to us, and we'll bring it up to council. And they each individually sound really good. And we're able to find $25,000 in a contingency or something. The problem is, what's the precedent, and where do we go from here? So I did hear in some discussion that this is very much bootstrap money. This is a one-time thing, if, and it's not, it wouldn't be a request, it'll come back next year, because if they don't run a big enough thing that can run itself, they wouldn't be back. If that's the logic here, I think it changes it. But if what we're doing here tonight is saying, we have those other processes, but if those don't work for you, come to the council and do other business, or come to a council member, and that's how we'll do it. And that makes me uncomfortable from a business controls, but also from a, like, is the new policy that we do support these things, especially, you know, when they're worthy causes, especially when there's good people associated with them? All of these will have worthy things, and they'll all have good people associated with them. So I am struggling with that. But again, I don't mean to say I don't want to do this. What I want to make sure is, do we know what we're doing? And again, I want to end this, I really didn't have a question there, but I guess I would like to have staff kind of weigh in and say, not so much on what the funding options are, but is there valid concern here of, we're wading into a new way of doing business, or is this sort of like, it's $25,000, we can do things like this? I can ask?
Want to respond? Councilmember, I don't really want to, but I will. I mean, it really is up to the council. I can think of a couple of other times where similar things occurred, and there was similar conversation about whether or not some of you are comfortable doing this. And so now this is maybe a third time that this is coming forward in about three years. All of them are slightly different. It makes it challenging when you're outside of the budget process. However, we do have contingency. There, I mean, this, it's really a question for you of whether you're comfortable with talking about this again and having it come forward. You're not approving something tonight other than for it to come forward and to enjoy this conversation again with some additional information. But if you're, if you, if you don't feel that you could vote for this and then not vote for additional other things, then I think that that would be a concern if I was a council member, because there could be, I can't say there will or won't be, but there could be additional organizations that would come forward. And so it really depends on the clarity of whatever your decision is, like any other policy decision, and whether or not you feel comfortable that we don't really have a process for this. Because the other agencies that are funded are, as you point out, providing a service that otherwise the city might be providing somehow, or leasing space, or something of that nature. We do have a process, but it's not for this amount of dollars, so it would be more up to that $5,000 amount. And so that's really different, that's what's been asked for. So this is sort of in the middle, and it's really one of those wonderful opportunities that you have when you become elected, to have policy dialogue about what you're comfortable with. All of the things that have been said are valid, and there could be others that come forward, and you would, you as individuals, or the future version of you, would be faced with those questions and concerns.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I guess what Administrator Zelms just said sort of topped it off with also with you, Mr. Keen, and what you said, Brooke. But mostly, thank you, Mr. Wall, for bringing this forward. I really appreciate the way this was written. I really appreciate the consideration that you gave and open-endedness to it. You believe in something, and you want to bring it forward. I believe in this. I think it's a wonderful thing. I would love to see this happen. But the flip side of that is, what precedent are we setting? Is this something we need to go forward with or not go forward with? Is this perhaps maybe a new policy that the council needs to set a precedent for and put down in our code of procedures so that we can do things like this more often? But I appreciate you bringing this forward, and especially the way you worded it, and maybe throwing it out to staff so that we could get a recommendation from them. Oftentimes, I will butt heads with staff if it's something that I, you know, am concerned about, and they all know that I do that, and that's, that's my role here, is to ask those hard questions. But in this particular instance, I think because this is somewhat legislative in nature, I would really like to hear what they would say about this as you, as you threw that out to them, given time to think about it, not just right now on the fly, but.
I think that's what this, this request is really, to turn it back with staff.
It's perfect, so thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. As someone who started this conversation with a constituent that also CC'd and has been working with Councilmember Palmer on this, I can just tell you, I am contacted, others of you are contacted, by many, many nonprofits asking for donations, asking for contributions, and asking us to fund their events. When this, when I had the conversation about what I have, absolutely no doubt, is a fabulous presentation, and I think we've all said that. I've got, I'm happy to send to the slides, because I have the whole presentation here and some of our initial conversations, and I'll send them to the staff so they know a little bit more about what they're being asked to fund. It isn't about whether it's a good project. Many, in fact, most of the requests that I get from nonprofits and nonprofit leaders in this community are worthwhile and worthy projects. So it is not, we have no shortage of great nonprofits with great ideas in this town. And every one of them, I say, we don't fund nonprofits at the city, except through CDBG funding, or some very small, as was mentioned, grants through the diversity office. We've had a little extra money from the diversity council that's been given out in very tiny grants. A request like this, taken out of any sort of process, makes me very nervous. I would, I would have preferred, and I understand, you know, why we are where we are, I would have preferred a discussion about, should the city council set aside $100,000 for nonprofit entities that are competitive, so that you would have some things from which to choose, all these great organizations that have contacted us, and I could start naming them very quickly, and their requests, so that you have a process, and then you pick and choose which ones are worth funding. I would feel far better with a process like that, that a one-off ask after I have told dozens and dozens of nonprofits, no, we don't do this. And now we're, for the third time, bringing forward a one-off, and nobody wants to hurt anyone's feelings, and we all are good people that want to support nonprofits, that we do things outside of a process that makes me very nervous. So I just, when I worked with this individual, and I thought, my colleague over there, that we would help them find funding through other sources. It was not my intent to violate our process by giving the money, it was, I will help you write grants, I will help you find some sources in town. Perhaps I have some funds in our social equity budget for next year that we could use. It was that kind of conversation, not that I expected that we would be coming back here on a one-off ask. So I just, I guess I would ask the staff, as you think about this request, to think about things like, since this is for next year, is there a way this fits with the Rochester Public Music's cultural agenda? And they have one. It may not, but I think it's a worthy discussion to say, it doesn't fit, or it does fit, and no, we don't do this, or yes, we do. And I think that would be nice. Could there be better conversations with the Mayo Civic Center, saying, in order to fund this, it would cost $50 per ticket? And we try to sell those tickets and have scholarships to lower the price to what's coming from a variety of sources in town? I think there are ways that we can take this through a process that's already established and already in our community, whether it be through a civic center and Rochester Public Music, or some other nonprofit which has funds for these types of events, rather than us set up a new process for a one-off request, despite the fact that it's wonderful, and I hope we can bring something like this to our community.
Thank you. Mayor, before we recall on people that have already spoken, Councilmember Bransford, any comments?
Well, it's the pleasure of sitting here and listening, right? I think everyone's got some really good points. I, I do appreciate the uneasiness about the process. That's why I think that, you know, tonight, tonight's business is, do we want to go forward and have the discussion? This is kind of a preliminary discussion as to what, what we think is appropriate policy-wise versus, you know, really good community support for a great organization. So I guess my comments will be sort of reserved for the future discussion and see where this lands.
Thank you, Councilmember Bransford. So Councilmember Dennis, Councilmember Wall, Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. I appreciate, a few of you agree with the, my thought about the process being important to evaluate, to make sure we don't pick favorites. I know I brought up Journey with Juneteenth, having a small amount for that, and that was turned down for a lot of reasons that we're talking about here. So I do want to make sure that, you know, we have a fair system. I also do see that there is issues, and I'm not trying to allude to what Councilmember Keen was saying, but it does, in my opinion, open up the floodgate if, if council members are seen as like, oh, potential sources for funding, like to have the door open for funding, would that influence democracy with candidates perhaps being targeted by special interest groups to get elected, so that they would have more of a poll for that specific organization? Looking at the broader sense, I think there's a lot of issues with, with this, for sure. What my support of it is, is, and this is my understanding, is it's not asking to fund the NAACP, it's asking to explore possible funding. Is that correct? I mean, it's, so we're not saying, even though I am a big fan, of course, of that organization, I feel, I think, hey, if we want to give the power to the staff for that specific, like, looking and auditing the departments and saying, oh, we can find a little money here, and they'll, and we can help nonprofits. I mean, that's something that I haven't been able to have, you know, access to how we can look at where, you know, line items are being spent. So I think it would be really beneficial for, for the council to see where there is available funding. And if it's given to an organization like NAACP, that's phenomenal. Journey, that's phenomenal. Other organizations, mentioned, like President Carlson and others, that would be phenomenal. But I think, what I, my understanding of voting for this is not to say, we are going to, yep, we're going to give this money, you know, if we find it. It's to say, let's explore options to see if it's even possible. And that might open up saying, hey, look at what we found in this budget and this budget. Wow, there's a whole bunch of wasteful, I shouldn't use the word wasteful, because that's, people gavel those, a bunch of spending that's not being used for the benefit of our community that could be used for the benefit of our community. And I think that would really give a tool to taxpayers to see where their money's being spent, and how it can better be spent, and help our, you know, connect. We have an epidemic of loneliness and mental health, and all these issues that nonprofits do a phenomenal job. And I think if we can identify funding, that would open up doors to do things that we're saying about having, deciding who gets the funding source. So I would vote for, I'm finding the possibility, the possibility of where funding is available, and I would vote for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Wall?
Well, point of order. I didn't know, Steph, did you want to respond to those comments? Because I saw some reactions.
I would be happy to. We wouldn't be looking for funding that's available. This is, we, our budget is programmed, the, if there was going to be a change with public music and all of their programming, that would be a significant change. The entire Forward Concert Series is about $25,000 for the, for all of the costs of the performers for that event. So it would be very, a very significant change to their programming, or in addition of funding for them to be able to take on programming, although this is more theater programming and isn't really what they do with a staff of three people.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wall?
And I too can appreciate the resonance on the part of establishing new policies. Whether they're new or not, it sounds like there's been some precedent set, of which I am not privy. It sounds like this was a conversation that started three months ago, nothing's happened. And this is a way to try and get this thing funded in a way that they can make a reasonable commitment to a group that is going to be playing across the Upper Midwest. the upper Midwest. They're not just waiting for Rochester to say, oh, y'all come down for Friday night. They need to make commitments and make commitments soon. So, a piecemeal funding, hoping that we can find some dollars under a rug somewhere, probably is not going to be successful for this effort.
Councilmember Palmer?
Yeah, I just want to point out that.
Or microphone, excuse me?
Excuse me, sorry. I apologize. It's, it is a one-time event that they're asking for, and they were asked to find a, a nonprofit to come up with it. That's what they did. You know, Rochester Music, I'm all for, for looking at next year's budget and saying, we need to, to give more money to something. And, you know, I'm a, we do a lot with a lot of the nonprofits and the CDBG money and the outside agency money. And, and, you know, if we need to increase the budget line to say, this is what we're going to do and set a priority that this is what we're trying to do, this does hit our priority of diversity and, and, and it doesn't, it hit that priority of, of, of hiring people and, and exploring how do we get our, our workforce to be more diversified. So, those are the things that excited me about it. And I, I, I like the way the motion was made and let the staff come back with some suggestions.
Councilmember Keen?
So, to clarify, I, I read the motion to say, come back with a recommendation of where to get the money versus, it is my understanding that the staff would say, this really is a council decision. This is not a staff decision that says, we think you should do this and this is the right place for it. The staff is taking direction from the seven-person council and saying, this one we prioritize, find the money. And it's not, I, I've been hearing, hearing comments, it sounded like it's to find out if we should do it. And I didn't hear it that way. I heard it to be, find the money. And so, that's where I'm at with it. My concern, as we approach this, this motion, is that we don't have a process around it. We have process around other things. We have business controls. The CDBG one is probably the best, the closest to this. But, again, if someone came up with the logic that made this very clear, that this is a, this is bootstrapping a festival thing, and came up with logic like that and said, but the way it's portrayed right now, I am not going to be able to support it.
I appreciate those comments. I've worked for the state, Blue Cross, now dealing with my family foundation and how we make funding decisions. Like, even at that level, we have significantly more structure in how we assess opportunities than this. So, I just, it's nothing about the organization. It's just that I can't agree with this process. So, thanks for the consideration, and it sounds like we'll probably have further discussion on it. I can't wait. Are we ready for a vote?
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries five-two. Councilmembers Keen and Carlson voting nay. Councilmember Palmer has some other business?
I do, and I have to apologize on this. I had some, some family issues this morning, so I wasn't able to get the notice ahead of time. But Northern Heights is, is going to have at the Park Board tomorrow a discussion and a vote on a 1.5-mile trail that's going to be up on the, just north, just, just to the top of the sensitive area that we have. And, and, and what my concerns are, and I have a couple of them, is, is we have a grant that we get received from the Department of Natural Resources, and it's for funding of invasive species and habitat restoration of Northern Heights Park. And it's the first phase of this. And, and we have the Decorah Edge that, that we have in here. From a soils perspective, this area is very, very wet. And there's a reason that they haven't had homes or anything else developed, but it's how wet it is. It's very steep. And so, so I'm worried about that. But I'm also worried about this grant, because we have a letter from the DNR that says, that this project cites active grant period would not favorably grant reverts, that would reflect poorly on the grant.
Point of order, point of order. I just want to understand. I apologize for interrupting, but this is Park Board business for tomorrow. Are we doing it tonight because we don't want them to do it, or what, what is happening?
Are you just sharing, just sharing a concern? Councilmember Palmer?
I'm sharing my concerns of, of, of liability for the city of Rochester coming up.
I think it's.
I, I, no, but again, you're, the, I, I, again, I, I think you're making a case one way or the other, and they're having a public hearing on this tomorrow. I don't, I don't understand why we're doing comments on it tonight.
Well, I can't comment at the Park Board, and I don't have a choice other than tonight to comment on it and bring up the information. On this area is very wet.
Councilmember Palmer, just like a couple brief key points, and then let's move on, okay?
I'm sorry, my, my point, I'm sorry, I appreciate you, I'm trying to direct this to the chair. Mike, I didn't know where this was going, if it was going towards a motion or anything.
No.
Apparently is not.
It is not.
That, that's helpful, that's helpful to know.
My perspective is it's fine for him to share a few key points, but let's move on after that.
I'm making a motion. I just, I'm just bringing some concerns up, and, and one of them is on this, on this grant program, Conservation Partners Legacy Grant Program. The other one is, it's been brought up, and I have some emails here that, from the staff, and I'll just read this one, and I'll be done. And it's whoever owns and manages the land, the trail group making promises, or the city of Rochester for Northern Heights, can be held responsible because of obvious and predictable slopes, stability, and erosion triggers. And those things are worrying me about it. And I'll just bring that up, that that's going to be tomorrow at the hearing. And if you want to go to it, go to it. And I just, I just have some concerns about it.
All right. Thanks for sharing your perspective. That is Park Board business, so not a council decision, but appreciate your thoughts. All right. Other business? Councilmember Dennis?
Right, thank you. Yeah, I just have a few things I jotted down. One, just to reiterate what was said earlier about July, we only, we only have one council meeting this month, which I personally disagree with. I think with a city of our size, we could find a way of making up that earlier council meeting somewhere, so that other people have time to speak, and if they couldn't make it to this one. But I, I do, I do want to jump in with Disability, Pride Month. That was the wonderful thank you that was read by Administrator Zelms. I, I think is something that we need to really take a look at with DEI. We have such wonderful people working on diversity, equity, inclusion, but we, we need to go above and beyond ADA, and, and when it comes to disability awareness and, and making sure that, of course, our housing and our facilities and our transportation is all accessible. I was brought to awareness, I'm jumping around a little bit here in what I was going to talk about here, but I think this ties into July are the theme of this month. With downtown, I was brought to the attention that there was some issues with our downtown Peace Plaza that has caused incident and injury to several residents and perhaps liability to the city. So, I wanted to kind of ask a little bit, a question, I haven't heard anything as a council member about this. I know there was signs up, but they were taken down, I think, when conferences were happening. And I'm a little bit confused on.
Ms. Dennis, I think there is an update on this. I'm not sure who from staff can give it, but I just saw an email about.
There was an update? I just want to see a timeframe on when they're going to be fixed, the pavers. Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Steinhauser, was it you that responded to the email about this?
That's President Carlson. No, it was not. But I do have a, I do have some information that we can provide additional through, we try to provide information in the weekly update that the city administration provides to you. We've, so there's, there's two issues. There's two issues about settlement. There's issues around, around the raised lettering. And just again, a reminder, when the project was designed, we did work with the disability community. We worked with disability teammates and committee, particularly from the Mayo team that came. And we prototyped all kinds of, of material and length, and it does meet ADA standards. So, I do want to acknowledge, I think it's important to acknowledge that from an ADA perspective, it does meet, meet those standards. Now, having said that, we recognize that of the, you know, many people that come down to the site every single week, that there have been some unfortunate incidents, a few unfortunate incidents. So, we are reviewing the permeable pavers and the, the settlement issues. We have removed pavers. We've recompacted and backfilled materials. They have replaced ridge structures. This is getting into detail. I can provide more. So, there's been some work related to the permeable pavers. There's still some additional remediation that needs to occur. And then the analysis of the raised letterings. Again, the raised lettering meets the, the ADA test, but there are some, there are some options, whether we do some additional leveling in place. If we do, we've had the subcontractors, Coro, Coro Stone onsite last week and the week before, I believe, to look at options of shaving additional height off of that brief, that small raised lettering to see what kind of impact that has. So, we're looking at that and understanding what those costs are associated with that. And I think for us, we would be good to have the parties involved, particularly city teammates and teammates from DMC, since it's a DMC-funded project, that we meet onsite and we look at some of, we analyze some of these options that we've been looking at, say, are they the best option for the long term? So, there is work being done related to both the settlement and the raised lettering. So, that's the best update I can give you at this point.
Great. And you can share that response with broader council, or some of those details?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, there's no timeframe, but there, it's going to, who pays for this? I guess I, I, I'm kind of, the taxpayers, or is it from original developing, or, I mean, I'm just curious. And then, does it also include, I know back years ago, right when I was elected, and I went and I, you know, took a wheelchair with a friend and, and was trying to, you know, not be in oncoming traffic when, you know, pushing up to the wheelchair accessible tables. And I was kind of looking at some of the issues in ADA back then, years ago. And that was a, a thought brought up about the lettering being in oncoming traffic, being a possible, potential distractive nuisance that could cause accidents if, for instance, someone with a disability, someone who's just curious, a child stops in traffic to read the poems and gets hit. Is that also being looked at to remove lettering that is in the middle of the street?
So, to the first question regarding, there's two issues. Again, there's the settlement issue. And so, under the question of costs is understanding what's the cause of the settlement. And based on what the cause of the settlement, of this sediment, sorry, settlement is, would determine where, you know, who bears the cost of the remediation of that. The issue of the raised lettering pavers and an alternative solution to the raised lettering pavers, whether it is shaving, whether it's modification of some shape or form, that we don't have an exact understanding of what those costs would be, because we haven't landed on a final solution related to a remediation if we decide to go that route. I would anticipate that when it comes to not the settlement issue, but when it comes to maybe a design correction is how I'll phrase it, even though I, maybe correction isn't even the correct word to use, is likely something that we would bring forward in a budget request through the DMC capital improvement budget process, to see if that would be a likely source of funding. To your question about the, I think that was you that had brought that up previously about the distraction of the lettering in the roadway, that is not something that we have discussed at this point, whether or not that should be removed. It has not been brought up by others, that that is a traffic hazard as far as project design.
Okay. I just, having been someone who's a school teacher, a parent, kids with special needs, and, I mean, I believe, I believe as a parent and as a council member, it is something to be looked at, because I don't want to have anything on my conscience if someone gets hit by a car because they're reading.
Can you move on? You have brought this up many times in previous council meetings.
This, this, because you don't want to hear what I have to say, doesn't.
Point of order, point of order, Madam Chair.
Ms. Spender Craig, or Mr. Spender Craig?
There's not room for arguing with the chair. The chair recognizes the speakers.
I, I made my point on record. But, okay, I'll just move on. I think it's a liability issue. I, okay, moving on to other things. One, I'm going to jump into public comment. We had only one resident. A lot of residents have said that the timing of public comment is way too early, especially those in facilities, like care facilities, who have dinnertimes and those who are getting off work and can't make it. So, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of people. We can't have call-ins, and we can't have Zoom meetings anymore. So, we have to be in person. But the one who has been here today was a resident from Ward Six. Her, the resident who came to speak, and other residents in Ward Six. There are many residents in Ward Six, I imagine, around the city who have pets. And I know small children, I've experienced with my own pets and small children, fireworks. And I have not seen the handout that was given to the clerk. I was hoping maybe in the future that can be handed out as people are speaking, so we can look at the facts that were given by residents who are speaking, because I would love to, to see that when we are able to speak in other business on open comment, to have those handouts available, because I have not had that brought to my, to me yet, or any council member, it looks like. And then, I just would love to see follow-up with that, with, if we don't have enforcement of policy, I believe they're just more of a suggestion of policy, a suggestion. And there are laws about fireworks that are not being enforced, and I want to know how we can do that to create a very happy and enjoy, you know, joyful.
So, point of order here. Councilmember Dennis is asking, is asking for something to do. I think you'd make a motion and get a second and get a vote, and see if that's the will of the council. Otherwise, I think it could be ignored.
I would like follow-up for the resident in writing on.
So, I, I, I made a point to the, to the chair, let her decide.
So, this item has had follow-up from staff already, from both police and administration. So, I'm not sure what additional follow-up you're requesting, but from our perspective, this has been taken care of.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have any other business?
I, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to that being enforced next year. No, my other business is, I have other business, yes. One, I feel it would be horrendous for the council to not address the Monday meeting that followed the weekend of the incredible appalling assassination attempt in, in our nation.
Talk about national politics on the dais.
I'm not talking about the issue of politics. I'm talking about the issue of division. And I, I hear often President Carlson saying, you know, please give me grace before you speak. And I just wanted to bring that up in the time of high conflict and admissed and different, I mean, being civil is really a lot, a lot of work. And I think we need to work as a council to stop the fear mongering, stop the propaganda, stop the otherizing, stop that, and really focus on truly being a compassionate and inclusive and welcoming city, not just because this is Pride Month and because DEI is our focus, but because we should be that council. And I'm bringing up the horrendous things nationally, but I think not, we're not talking about murder, hopefully ever here, but the same kind of toxicity is happening.
Point of order, point of order, Madam President.
Spender Craig?
To the extent that we've continued to hear that attack against colleagues consistent with Councilmember Wall's reference earlier to the rules, you all have heard that over and over again from Councilmember Dennis. It isn't, it is an attack on her colleagues, and it's against the rules and should not be allowed.
It's. Thank you. Can you move on to any other topics? Otherwise, Councilmember Kirkpatrick had one final comment.
Okay, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm moving on. I'm just addressing things that have happened in the past that are facts. I, I have a couple other things I want to talk a little bit about Rochester Police Department, the ride-along program. I will talk, I will follow up that in email. I feel that there's some discrepancies on getting council members' information. And so, I just want to, on the record, hear a council say that will be followed up. And if anyone, they can data-pull emails. And if you can't data-pull emails for some reason, please let me know, because every council member's email should be able to be data-pulled. And then, my, I have a few other things I'm going to skip. My one thing that I wanted to address, and I, I brought this up very, very, very briefly, but going to this amazing Riverside concert this weekend, and I, I just, I can't speak more highly on public music and on getting people together, the amount of people that were together and in up, in spirits that are, I mean, it was just amazing how everything came together, the police department and every, I mean, just was, it was a wonderful, wonderful event. Free, equitable, it was just great. And so, I mean, I, I have so many amazing things to say about how we are being part of that. I, I do think that the Forward Series, we could utilize the bus transit to allow people to, to get to that concert more equitably across the city and utilize our, you know, our departments together. together. I think that would be something to look into. But what I'm bringing up now is something that, when I went to get my children who were with me pretzels, and it was cashless, right? So we have to bring a card, and I luckily didn't send my kids up with a $20 bill, right? I went up with a card, I'm like, oh, I was going to be cash, so, but I know our city is going more and more and more cashless, and there is so many issues, if you research that, on how it is not equitable. It is, it is, because like our city parking ramps are going cashless.
Councilmember Dennis, please let me speak. You have already brought this up in a council meeting. We're not going to sit here and listen to your long list of business that none of the rest of us have brought our laundry list of things to talk about.
I'm bringing up-
And you've talked about multiple things on your list, multiple previous meetings. Move on to the next item. We hear your concern about, it's not that I'm not saying you have a valid concern, you've just already talked about it. So can we move on?
I would like to propose a motion that would have staff look into the, how equitable this new form of forced payment is to use for city services, like the parking ramp.
What's your motion?
I would, I, I move, I ask, similar to what was brought up by Councilmember Wall, the staff to look into, bring back a brief report on, on if this is some, a direction that we want to continue to go, because right now, I know-
Okay, stop the motion, is there a second? Hearing none, can we move on to the next topic? When there's not a second, we move on to the next topic.
I understand there's not a second, and I know that some council members will not second our CIA with me.
Point of order, point of order, Madam President.
I'm just, okay, at a loss here.
Well, it's a controlling tactic of what we want on the agenda and what people want on the agenda. People have asked me, saying, their 16-year-old daughter can't go to the parking ramp because they don't have a credit card. That's a real legitimate issue for residents in Ward Six.
Point of order.
You're violating council rules right now.
Um, I, well, I feel being-
All the ways, we asked you to stop the conversation, you're not stopping. We asked you to not talk while Mr. Spindler-Craig has the floor, you continue talking. That's not how we operate here, so just please pause for a second so Mr. Spindler-Craig can weigh in.
I think you've given direction to move on to the next item. If any council member continues to violate the rules, you move on to the next speaker.
Okay. Okay, just point of clarification, and I'll be done.
No, we're not doing that. Just move on to your next topic.
The rules were, I wouldn't, I never had to say in the rules and-
Wait, the council approved the rules, that means that we abide by the rules collectively. Ms. Kirkpatrick, go ahead.
Please revisit the vote on the rules.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick, go ahead. Back to the DMC pavers quickly.
Thank you. I received an email from Josh DeFrang answering my question regarding the current status of the pavers. He responded on July 10th. I would request that that email response get sent to all the council, if you would, please. Thank you. And then the only other question, well, it's a comment, graciously delivered, the usage of the term settlement in this particular instance with this location in our city, with what I understand to be injuries that have occurred that are under consideration for reimbursement of medical expenses and/or potential grievances against the city, I would encourage you to perhaps use the word settling, is what happens to pavers when the ground underneath gives way and then your upper surface falls down, so instead of-
I actually found that confusing for a second.
Yeah, instead of settlement, I said, well, I'm, it doesn't need an apology, I just think in this particular instance, we want to use the term settling. The pavers are settling. So that was just my comment, graciously delivered, not meaning to offend at all Ms. Steinhouser. And then following on that, the timeline that was delivered in this email, it seems like some recommendations of a meeting on May 30th, meet with all parties involved and discuss a solution, including costs, meeting set for 5:30. Mr. DeFrang bolded the items that have been done, so that meeting has not been, has not happened yet that was scheduled for May 30th. So the meeting you said was going to be happening, I think, this week? Is that actually that meeting that was scheduled for May 30th, do you know?
I don't, I'm just going to answer this, I don't believe so. All of those meetings have occurred and they're continuing to work towards the solution, so there's additional work that's-
Okay, awesome. But I think the rest of the council would appreciate seeing this email. Thank you so much.
I just want to thank my colleagues for backing me up. This is very difficult sometimes. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, we're adjourned.
Sorry for asking hard questions.